I'm going to open the August 13 Newton Planning Board meeting and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The Board is working under a little bit of a temporary situation right now. So Mr. Doggett is the Secretary. We have temporary ex officio Mr. Larry Foot. And we need to elect a temporary Vice Chair. And I would like to nominate Mr. Hamill for that.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay. First item on the agenda is McKenzie Properties LLC.
About, yeah, appointing him.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you. I am going to appoint Mr. Zelinski as a voting member in Mr. Holland's absence. Thank you. Okay. So the first item on the agenda is a public hearing for McKenzie Properties LLC for a minor site plan and change of use, approval at 16 Amesbury Road in Newton. The property is referenced as tax map 10 block 7 lot 20-1. Mr. McKenzie has given Jones and Beach the authority to act in his behalf, and I believe there's somebody here from Jones and Beach to present the plan. And I will ask you to come up and you can present your plan. And if you have, I'm assuming that you got the letters from both the RPC Planner and the Town Attorney, Town Engineer, so if you could address those two, that would be great. And if you would state your name, please.
Thank you. Excuse me. I'm John Arnold from Hinckley Allen. Excuse me, I represent the applicant McKenzie Heating and Cooling. With me tonight is Scott McKenzie, business owner, as well as Barry Guyer from Jones and Beach, the project engineer, as well as several employees and family members from McKenzie. As you said, we're here for a minor site plan approval for 16 Amesbury Road. Scott bought the property about three years ago to be the office headquarters for his business. And he came to this Board back in 2017 shortly after buying the property to go over his plans for the property and his business. And this Board decided back then that Scott needed to come in for a minor site plan approval. Obviously, there's been some delay in getting the application in. We apologize for that. But Scott has been operating the business out there, the office out there for the past three years. And by all accounts, we believe it's been a big success. He's brought new business to the town. He's beautified the property through landscaping, maintenance, and repairs. And to our knowledge, all the feedback has been positive. There haven't been any issues or complaints. The basis for our application tonight is twofold. The first, as you mentioned, was a change of use from retail to office. And the second is to approve the proposed paving of an existing gravel parking lot. Before Barry goes into the site plan, I just want to briefly address the change of use and give you a little bit of history and explanation of what's going on out there and what the business is. Before Scott's purchase, the property was used for a number of different commercial uses over the years, electronics installer, cabinet maker, boat sales and repairs. Scott's primary use is office, as I mentioned. The primary building is a two-story building. All the office spaces upstairs in the building, downstairs are a series of garage bays that store parts and equipment for the business. Scott's been a business for about 25 years. It's a family business. He has 14 employees. They deliver heating fuel and do HVAC service and repairs, basically in the greater seacoast area, including New Hampshire, Maine, and Massachusetts. And the site that we're talking about tonight has been the office headquarters for the past three years. He has five full-time office staff that work in the office on a daily basis. They handle things like billing, parts ordering, dispatch for service and deliveries. And the dispatching is all done remotely by computer. So the service techs aren't coming into the office on a job-by-job basis or even on day-to-day basis. It's all done remotely and they basically come into the office if they need to pick up parts for a job or to come in for a weekly staff meeting, things like that. Aside from, excuse me, aside from some basic routine maintenance on the vehicles, all service and repairs is done off-site by third parties at garages. And there isn't any bulk storage or distribution of heating fuel from the site at all. All of Scott's fuel delivery trucks are parked at a separate facility in Seabrook. And even the two 275 gallon heating fuel tanks that were at the property previously to heat the building have been removed and replaced with propane. So quite literally, the only heating fuel that ever comes onto this property are periodic small quantities that service techs bring back after doing jobs where they've changed an oil filter or purged an oil line. And those quantities get put into a container with secondary containment just to be transported off-site and properly disposed of. So the use itself is a very non-intensive use. We think it's proven itself over the past three years to have no negative impacts on the neighborhood or otherwise. And the only physical changes that we're here tonight about are the paving of an existing gravel parking lot, which I mentioned at the outset. So with that introduction, I'd like to turn things over to Barry Guyer. He'll walk you through the site plan, show you the parking lot issue. And thanks for having us. We're happy to address any questions you have along the way or at the end.
Thank you.
Good evening. Barry Guyer with Jones and Beach Engineers. As you know, a part of the pro- application is to allow the paving of the section of the existing gravel parking lot adjacent to the building. The proposed pave area is approximately 12,600 square feet and allows for 11 marked parking spaces. We are in receipt of the letters from the Rockingham Planning Commission as well as KB Partners. I'd like to go through those. We did make the revisions requested in those two review letters. I do have those updated plans for you tonight.
Anybody in the flight? One more question. Pass some of the small over there.
It's a new one. Scott, new one, Roger?
Yeah, I have another one.
As far as the review letters concerned, the letter from the peer review KB Partners,
item number one is in regards to the drainage, the stormwater characteristics, which they found to be no significant change based upon the existing conditions of the parking lot. They do ask that we depict the limits of all the proposed paving on the plan. We have done that on the revised plans. And as you can see, I line in red on, I don't know if you can see that maybe even a little closer. It's out in red on the plan. Number two was they would ask that we depict the number of parking spaces in snow storage. The parking space size and numbers have been depicted on the revised plans, as is the snow storage shown on the plan. I want to skip number four for just, or number three for just a second. But number four is there was a request to include the appropriate professional stamps. And the revised plans do include a surveyor stamp, wetland scientist stamp, and myself on the PE. Our stamps are all included. Number three, going back, is in regards to the existing fence on the, which encroaches on the right-of-way. And the question from the review engineer was verify that the adequate site distance exists at these locations. In order to do that, we kind of have to go through a process to look at that and make sure we do have it. I did do that today. This is an overview of the site. Within, located here at the top, this is our driveway location. Actually, take the site distance of 14 and 1/2 feet back from where the existing pavement is, thanks to where the person that we sent it, they're sending it in their car and they need to pull out. And we look at 400 feet each direction, which is required by PIT. So looking at 400 feet each direction, making sure we have clear on-site seeing vehicles that are coming before we pull out. We do, you see the red line, that's 400 feet each direction, and we do clear the fence. So it is a problem. And 14 and 1/2, a little conservative, makes it 10 feet, so we make it. The review letter from Rockingham RPC, I think John went through most of the items, or one and two at least, and I'm sure he'll be able to, would like, if you guys would like him to address anything additional to those, he'd be more than happy to. But number three, there was a request for silt fencing in the wetland boundary to be marked prior to construction. We don't have a problem with that. We're actually proposing a silt sock. The gravel out there is already compacted, so excavating to put in silt fence would be kind of detrimental, more than helping. So we propose a silt sock around the pavement to prevent any runoff into the wetlands. That, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
That is just a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead, Jim.
What volume, you said, you mentioned bringing back possibly some used oil. What volume of used material are we?
So it's periodic in the sense that what comes back at any given time is, you know, a gallon here or there from a job. But it gets put in a container, the two containers are out there, 55 gallons each. So those essentially get filled up or near-filled and then transported off-site for disposal. So a maximum, assuming those two units got filled, a maximum of 110 gallons.
And are those stored inside or outside the building?
They're in an undercover portion of garage bay. The end garage bay is not enclosed on the front, but it's all undercover. And it's on a cement floor with secondary containment under the containers.
Okay.
Just along that, is there any, like a barricade or something, so there's not an accidental backing into that, into those?
The, Scott can address this further if he'd like to, but having toured the property and seen it, they're located in a garage bay where, it's not a garage bay where vehicles are pulling in and out. It's a garage bay that's solely for storage, in an area that's not accessible, but, you know, regularly by vehicles coming in and out.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Jim.
Just one follow-up. Is there spill control materials on-site if there were to be a spill of that?
So I have a question. I'm not sure if it's irrelevant, but, I mean, it should be. To my knowledge, to the fire department and life safety codes, that business has not had any inspections for life safety codes. Now you're mentioning that you have containers of dirty oil there. You have changed the previous oil supply to propane supply without any inspections. Is that something we can take care of this week? Or do you have that on file? Huh? They have inspections? Do you have paperwork on files for that? If I can come out tomorrow and see?
I mean, the fire department, we had a, we had a, we had an inspection, we had an accident.
Okay. Is it okay to ask about the occupancy permit?
Your remarks that you've been telling the Board, do you have that in writing anywhere that we could get a copy?
In terms of the proposals?
The answers to these questions.
So we, oh, sorry, the plan revisions?
No, no.
Or the used experience?
When you, everything?
Response to the comments you're asking about.
Yeah, right.
I did not put that in writing. We can put that in writing and submit it tomorrow.
I would appreciate if you would do that and then send it to us. That would be great. We're still looking here.
On the plan, behind the building, there's a propane tank. Now, is that, is that new and is that what is now used for heating the building?
You're correct. That is what you think. It used to be oil tanks. They're being removed.
And also on the plan, on the second page, on note 19 says that there'll be no overnight tractor trailer parking. Are there any other trucks parked there?
That's one of our general notes that should have come off, and we can modify that. But, you know, that just protects everybody, prevents tractors from parking on the site.
But none of the oil trucks get parked there overnight?
No oil trucks get parked there overnight. They're all stored in Seabrook.
Can I, I just want to back up a little. Because in December of 16, you came with an application. So now, we never gave them anything since then? They never came back for anything?
No.
So they don't have an occupancy permit to be there now or like the last three years?
No.
That was my next question.
So is that our whoops or their whoops?
So that is technically a code enforcement issue if they didn't apply. If there had been a code enforcement action, which there wasn't, then the likely ramifications for that is the code enforcement officer may have said, "You need to go to the planning board to seek the approvals you need." They seem to be here doing that. So whether the town would undertake code enforcement is really up to your select board. They seem to be meeting the, what the code enforcement result may be by being here this evening. But that's really up to the select, that's outside of the planning board's jurisdiction.
Well, the select board requires an occupancy permit.
They do.
But if they don't come in and apply for one?
Then it is a code enforcement because you have an occupancy permit code.
That's why I don't recollect any of those inspections that they're talking about to the fire department either.
For that, I can't speak.
Did Ziggy know of any?
I've been around for, you know, three years, and I watched the permits go through, and I don't remember one, you know, you could have.
The chief came up because we were moving a 500 gallon tank. I asked him for the house, and they came up for the tank inspection, Sam said he needed the gas pipe inspection for the underground.
And another one, then, like, is the building? I don't, he's the fire inspector, and I'm the captain. Did anybody come up, are you got a fire alarm system or a sprinkler system?
I don't know. Okay. There's been, we don't know about that.
Can I recommend you come up to the podium to speak?
Yeah, and identify yourself too, please.
Thank you.
I'm Scott McKenzie, owner of McKenzie Heating and Cooling. So what, so the question, I'm missing the question.
Is there a fire alarm system in this warehouse?
Uh, yes, there is.
Okay. I'm glad the fire department would like to come out and just check the paperwork.
We're in the process of trying to.
Not to give you a hard time, but just, you know, follow our plan. There have been changes in the fire department where they used to keep the applications for permits and stuff, and they could have got misplaced, so, yeah.
I have a question on the first page, number 11. And I don't know if this is another one of those carryover from something else where it's talking about 15 full-time employees in a cafeteria?
We were looking at the septic system that was existing to make sure that it was adequate for the proposed use. So we look at it, and there are certain criteria that DES has for producing that number. So we did look at the 15 people in a building that has a cafeteria. They have an area, like a kitchen area, not a cafeteria, a lunchroom. So that's the number we utilized to get that, the calculation for the septic. And the septic is adequate for the proposed use, or the current use, I should say.
So the, the criteria used for the septic system is far greater than what the actual current use is.
Correct. The septic system is designed for more than we're actually producing. If all 15 employees were there at the same time every day, which they're not.
Just, kind of, two questions. I think the first one was answered on the, on page two on that propane tank, and I think you've kind of answered it. But it says, "Proposed propane tank to be utilized as a filling tank."
Yeah, that was on the old plan. The newer plan, it doesn't say that.
Does it? Did I move the old plan instead of the new plan? No, the new one, yeah, they both say it.
No, it says it.
Oh, does?
Right here.
Is that just a terminology thing, or, like, filling tank, to me, sounds like people are going to come fill.
Right now, it's just.
Sorry.
Sorry.
You have to remember, you're on TV. The people at home have to hear you, too.
Right now, it's just for the heating of the building. At some time, we're going to go to the fire department. We went to the fire department already. They wouldn't give us a permit to do that because we didn't have an occupancy permit yet. But we intend to put a filling plant for, we have six of our vehicles run on propane. So it would just be to fill our own vehicles on-site.
Oh, okay. So they're propane-powered?
Yes, propane-powered, yep.
Okay. All right. And then, oh, yeah. You mentioned, well, the septic system, you think, is more than big enough. Is there anything on here that says, okay, these are the max number of full-time employees we'll have? Or up to this max? I just like, how do we know that?
I just have one more. So when I saw those figures and we were putting the numbers down, and because they call it a lunch, cafeteria, it's not really a cafeteria, we actually installed a water meter. We haven't even, we've used under 10,000 gallons since February 1st. So those numbers are tiny compared to the size required by the septic system. And we could probably grow, because we have the meter to see, track our use, we'd have to be five times as big to ever go over what the.
So would there be on this site plan approval, a maximum number of full-time employees allowed under this?
It wouldn't be a typical condition of an approval, to have a maximum number.
Okay, all right. How do, what?
You can limit it by the number of parking spaces that are available in park. Usually, an office use for septic, the volumes required are very low.
And that's the only, that's the only limiting factor?
Effectively, yes. Building size, parking space, and making sure your septic system is adequately designed, which this seems to be.
I see on this new page two that you have shown the snow storage, too, which was asked for.
But that's close, that's right by the wetland, right? You can't put snow storage.
Well, the one little one is, yes.
Right. You can't put snow storage in the wetland, especially when this is an aquifer district, right?
There is not a prohibition in the wetlands to put snow storage. You don't want to put it over your stormwater detention basins, which they're not proposing to do. If the Board would like, you can certainly request that the snow storage be outside of the wetland buffer, which they do seem to have adequate room to be able to do.
I'm just wondering, too, also, this way in the back here, the existing gravel parking area to remain, I'm wondering on the old plan originally from three years ago, what was there originally? And then, is that a driveway that goes over to that?
I believe so, yeah. I think that that gravel area was, has been there for a while.
Well, that's what I wanted to know about.
Based on the aerial photos, which I did review going back to the early 90s, that gravel has been there for at least quite some time. Certainly longer than they've owned the property.
If when, do we know when the last time we approved the site plan for this site? Jim? Do we know when we, the last time we approved the site plan for this site?
Probably around 2011, when the electronics people wanted to move in.
And that could have just been a change of use at that time? If the buildings didn't change?
Yeah, but that would address, if we had a plan, it would show that the gravel would have been there.
A change of use would have potentially just had a sketch, not a plan.
Okay. Any more Board questions? No? Okay. Are there any butters here that would like to?
Barbara?
What?
You guys have not accepted jurisdiction at this point. And my recommendation is that this does seem to qualify for your minor site plan review. And I do think it's a complete application. So if you agree with that, those two statements, you could accept jurisdiction as the Board.
Move to accept jurisdiction. Second?
Two seconds.
Jim White?
So you want to accept the plan that we've seen?
No, no, no. Except, it just means you have enough information, yeah, you have enough information to be able to then make a judgment on the plan. But it also allows you to open up the public hearing, so the public that has come to speak.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor to take jurisdiction?
All right.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Now I will open it up. If there are any butters here that would like to say something, I would ask you to come up to the podium and identify yourself. If not, that's fine, too.
Tom McElroy, I'm the next-door neighbor to McKenzie Oil. They've done a lot to really improve the property, and it's, to me, it's been a great, great improvement for the town. I have no objections to anything in regards to what we're talking here this evening.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure.
How's it going? I'm Scott Hayden. I'm a butter with Michael Shanks over here. I agree, great neighbors, great improvements on their land, everything like that. One concern I do have is I know that they went in this, and it's up to you guys to make the change of, for type of facility that it is, and I was always under the impression that it is a office location. And my one concern, to be honest with myself, is if you do get that change of permit, does that, like, kind of give, like, leeway to say, oh, now that you have this business permit, you can become a distribution center or a manufacturing, you know what I'm saying?
No.
Okay, that would be another issue.
If they were wanting to expand that use to do distribution, they would have to come back to the planning board. And you would be notified again as a butter.
Completely on board, so good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, does the Board feel like there's enough information here to approve this? Or do you have any more questions?
Can we, before, we approve it under circumstances, that they get their occupancy permit?
That would, that would end up being like a?
Condition of approval.
Condition of approval.
Correct.
That would be a pretty typical condition of approval, too. And another could be that all life safety has been addressed. That would also allow the fire department and health officer to go in.
I'll have him go down tomorrow and meet whoever from the company to go over their paperwork.
And if it's just a reviewing the paperwork, that would satisfy that condition, assuming it's all?
Well, I know the occupancy permit they do not have, so they would have to file that and get the proper department signed off on it.
Correct, if they have not have received an occupancy permit. My, I've got two small suggestions, just based on what information they were presenting. And one condition would be that they put in writing all of the uses described at tonight's hearing, and that be a condition of approval, to have that in writing, it would go in the file as part of the approval. The other is that there should be no hazardous material stored on-site. That would just be compliant with your aquifer district. And that no oil trucks or distribution trucks be stored on-site overnight.
Would that, would that include those 55-gallon drums that they're storing?
If you wanted to not allow them to do that, you could make that part of your condition. Because of that 55 threshold, that, honestly, that is the threshold for DES hazardous waste rules is 55. And if it's in secondary storage or secondary containment, it's on concrete, as they've described, and it's being stored undercover. And they have spill control. Those are effectively what DES would require under groundwater protection rules.
And they have to be properly labeled.
They do have to be properly labeled. That is one additional. So they do seem to be in compliance or just below at least the threshold of what they would be required, and they're already doing what they would be required if they were above that threshold.
You said 55-gallon, does that mean they can only, they should only?
It's in 55-gallon containers.
Oh, is it, okay.
Right.
The only other thing, too, is to limit the outside storage. Like, I noticed there's like four or five big propane tanks in that existing parking lot now. But I think we had said that there shouldn't be any outside storage of items.
That's, I think you're correct.
How big are the tanks?
I don't know, they're empty.
Where are they located?
They're in that existing parking lot, in the back there.
A pack?
Yeah.
Oh, they're right here where they show in the parking spaces?
Yeah.
No, she's showing out in the.
Out in that existing gravel parking lot out back.
Oh.
The one in the back?
Yeah. Yeah. I know there's something out there. I saw it.
So they're visible from the road?
Yeah, well, from the church parking lot, yeah. So there's really not supposed to be outside storage of items, right?
That would have to be on the plan.
That they could store things in?
Can I recommend we ask the applicants about the outside storage of the propane tanks?
Well, I don't know if they're necessarily tanks back there.
Well, how about we ask, why do you have outside storage?
Why do you have outside of storage tanks out back?
Yeah, Mr. Mackenzie, would you just let us know what's in the back in this existing gravel parking area, please?
Right now, there are some propane, we don't store, we store our propane tanks at our propane storage facility. Right now, we're building a building there to store our oil trucks, so we're, we're a little short of room. But those tanks, almost all the tanks, there, there's six tanks right there now. Four of them are actually under vacuum. They're not really a propane tank yet. They're brand-new, so.
And they're empty?
Right now, it's just temporary, because we're?
No, but they're empty?
Yeah.
Okay.
They've never had gas in them.
How big are the tanks?
Uh, right now, there's two 1000s and four 120-gallon tanks.
But they're never fully empty. Don't they contain 20% when they're supposedly been empty?
No, I mean, when they're brand-new, they're empty and never had gas in them. They're not really a gas tank yet, at that point.
We'll check that out, too, when we go down under.
Okay.
Is there a timeframe you expect to have them removed from the site?
Uh, yes, they'll be out of there, um, the framework is up for a building. I would say they'd be out of there in a month.
So would a reasonable condition of approval be that those are to be removed within 90 days of this?
Yep, that's fine.
Conditional approval date, if this board does that?
And then we would?
And then no more?
List that there are no more outdoor storage?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. If the board is happy with the conditions that we have talked about, may I have a motion to approve the application?
Can you, why don't you reiterate what the, what the?
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, okay.
It's just one of the notes about outside vent, the air conditioning and stuff on the roof, and it has, it's gonna be vented away, like, are you planning on putting ventilation up there, or?
No, that's just one of my general notes. We can take it off if you don't like it.
Because we'd have to go by other, you have rules about that anyway, right?
Yes, it would be, most of them wouldn't apply to it. So removal is the easiest, is to remove the note.
Right, okay.
What's your number with that?
Yeah, which number is that?
Let's see, it was on page?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
On the new one?
Take that eighteen out of there, all right.
Yeah, I guess why they, they're gonna add a note that says that there's gonna be no outside storage?
Well, that's what I was gonna say, because I was, this may be these things that you've carried over from other plans, but it says, "All outdoor display areas shall be maintained, all, you know, along the sidewalk." I think maybe we need to take those numbers, fifteen and sixteen, out of there.
Fifteen and sixteen.
Because no outside storage.
We can also take off nineteen, if that's fine.
No, you can leave that one.
Leave that one. You like that one.
I like a no horn blowing.
Okay, so let's see if I?
So you're gonna take, okay.
I was gonna go over the list.
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna have all the comments that were addressed from the town engineer and the RPC planner in writing. No hazardous materials are gonna be stored onsite, no oil trucks stored overnight, you will remove the propane tanks within 90 days, there's no outside storage, you will comply with all life safety, and get your occupancy permit. Does that sound like I've gotten everything?
Just one last one, that all local, state, and federal permits will be obtained. I think that they've gotten all of that, with the exception of the occupancy permit. And the, this last one is whether or not you want the Mylar to be recorded. You have typically not required that for a minor site plan. I don't know that you have a engineered plan that can be recorded, and it's got a license surveyor's stamp on it. So that is an option. It would be Sheet C2 that you would have recorded, but it is a minor site plan.
Right.
And there, there is cost associated with that recording.
Well, but I mean, it's, what, $26 a page? It's not that, and?
Maybe you gotta prepare it also.
Hasn't been one, it seems like, recorded.
I, I was just gonna say, I would, I would think that it needs to be recorded. But does the board want, which page does the board want, or does the board want both pages?
You would want C2.
C2?
C2, is the current proposal.
And the other thing is the limitation on no outside storage, that should be included as a note.
Oh, yes, thank you.
It could be phrased as no outside storage past 90 days after the approval of this plan.
Okay.
The other thing was the snow storage, too. Do we wanna keep it out of the wetland area there?
Well, Ms. Ralston said that that little bit would be okay.
I'm, I'm not saying it would be okay. I'm saying if you would like it to be moved, you have that ability.
Okay.
Saying it does not violate it for it to be adjacent to the wetland.
So where would they then be able to?
That was gonna be my question.
Put it on the other side towards?
Okay, just just be a note, because right now, where they show it, they, you don't show it in the wetland area. Well?
Well, the little one on the right, the triangular one.
It's in the wetland buffer, not in the wetland itself.
Shows it hitting it a little bit, yeah. Or a note that just says it won't be that area.
You would want, no, you want the snow storage shown on the plan.
Right, you do. So what do you want to do about that snow storage?
What, if the applicant's engineer perhaps has an alternate suggestion?
Right. I, I do, I know we didn't talk about this, but in looking at where you're gonna put the snow, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to maybe put a bollard in front of this propane tank, if you're gonna be with snowplow, pushing snow over that way? Is that something that can easily be done?
Well, they would have to, under the life safety code, they have to.
Okay.
We'll do that when we go.
You'll take care of that through the life safety code, okay? Okay, so what does the board?
May I make one clarification or request about your conditions?
Absolutely.
The second condition regarding no storage of hazardous materials, there was a discussion on that not applying to the two 55-gallon drums that we discussed. I just wanted the notice of decision and the vote to be clear on that point, because the condition, as you read it, only said no storage of hazardous materials.
Okay, then maybe we'll just put?
You can say?
No, no storage of hazardous materials other than the?
I would say in containers of excess of 55 gallons.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Got that? Okay. So again, are we over here talking about some, anything with the snow? Do we need them to do something different with the snow, so we can have this on the plan, or what?
Well, if they don't end up pushing it into the, you know, way back over there.
Right.
What has the experience been over the last three years that you've been there on where the snow gets put, and the areas?
I haven't really.
Didn't the conversation committee go down just a half, this, this past snow, snow year, and have them move all their tanks because of that same reason? Should we refer that to them?
They, okay.
They were completely different.
They had, yes, because, because that area was designated as snow storage, and they were putting other things there. That's why that happened.
Okay, all right.
If I may?
Yes.
The, the areas that were in question regarding the snow storage, the edge of the wetland is basically defined by the tree line, if you've been out there. So you can't, they couldn't really push the snow into the wetland, because the trees are right there along the whole edge of the, of the, that area. So I think there's more than enough room to put the snow on either side of that little driveline that we have as we show it.
Okay.
We also indicate in our notes that if there's excess snow, they'd have to truck it off-site to a?
Right.
An area that, or they could, you know, haul it in the back where the existing park, gravel parking is, too.
Okay.
Well, I just have one more question of Jen. We can give them permission to pave this parking lot?
It's already impervious per your stormwater.
Well, what I was gonna say is, do, if they're gonna pave it, do they need to contact the state at all, since Amesbury Road is a state road?
They're not paving onto the state road, so, no.
All right, that was just a question. You had another question?
No, I was ready to make a motion.
Okay.
We ready?
Everybody ready here?
Taking motion that we approve the application with all of the conditions that were previously stated.
Go ahead. A second, thank you.
Who's the second?
Mike. Was it you?
Sorry.
Okay, sorry, Larry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, thank you. Thank you very much, and you'll, you can send that list of answers to those questions, to the planning board, that would be great. Oh, we're losing our audience. Did you get both of these guys' names?
Jimmy?
Did you get both of these guys' names?
No, I wanna get their?
Yeah.
Yes, we'd like it when the butters show.
Have you ever been to one of these meetings, not necessarily here, where it's a contentious?
Yeah.
The guy that comes to the fire department, he wasn't here tonight. He's always giving us a hard time. He doesn't have to do this, he doesn't have to do that.
Oh, okay, that's good, because I had it as dyer, D-Y.
Yeah, now, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Could you call the time of closing the public hearing?
Oh, no, okay. I'm closing the public hearing for Mackenzie at 7:43. And the next item on the agenda is a completeness determination of an application referencing map 14, block 1, lot 1, and map 14, block 1, lot 27-3.
And I'm going to recuse myself of the discussion of this item.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Who is going to speak to this? Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. This is a separate one.
Thank you.
Is this updated from the thing we got last time?
I don't know. Now, is this large copies of the same that we had before?
Same, same plans.
Same thing?
And if you look in your lower, I think, right-hand corner, you'll see the numbers on the plan?
Okay.
As we go through them.
Okay.
Scott Frankowitz, my engineer, couldn't make the meeting tonight. I'm taking his little mini-vacation. So he asked me to come, and this is for discussional purposes only, in that we wanted to address the planning board. We got a denial from the building department, and we want to put an additional building on lot 3. And with that, there's a gentleman that wants to acquire the building. He's in the commercial and industrial park. He has his own roughly 5,000, 6,000 square feet of space, and he also leases 4,000 square feet off of me. I own 4,000 in Six Puzzle Lane. It, it doesn't show Six Puzzle Lane, but Six Puzzle Lane is the first building that we put up, and that is in Phase 1. And we've condo'd those buildings and sold them off. There's 15 units. I believe Interstate Rigging owns four, and I own two, and there's 15, 15 units in total. On the proposed Phase 2A, that is Eight Puzzle Lane. It's occupied by Quintana Associates. They were out of Haverhill. They've been with us for roughly about six, seven years. And that's a 26,000 square-foot building. The first building is 22,000, I believe, and we're looking, and we want to propose, with ZBA approval, it's roughly about a 6,000 square-foot building because of the expansion of Interstate Rigging. So we've, we've divided the land into a Phase 1, 2, and 2A and 2B. And we've kind of taken a straw poll, a survey with Six Puzzle Lane, and they're all on board. Obviously, we have to notify all of our butters, which I believe we have. There's been a little chaos as to the dates and presentation with ZBA, with Gail, the secretary being out. There was some confusion on the dates, and so I believe that we're gonna be on board for next meeting with ZBA. And if you flip over to Plan 2, this shows you basically the phase, the phases in Lot 3 as it sits in the subdivision. And its associated location. There's roughly, I think, about 280 acres of land that I own continuously through the, there's a couple of residential pieces and commercial. So that's Phase, excuse me, Lot 3 with all the phasing, in that, in how it sits in the subdivision. And Scott, you know, when he makes his presentation, obviously, we'd have to come back in front of the planning board if we get approval with the ZBA, in that he will have all his, you know, drainage ponds and drainage calculations, and, you know, all his setbacks approved by ZBA. It's somewhat similar to the first building on the left-hand side, as you come in Southern New Hampshire Industrial Park or Drive Up Puzzle Lane. It's, it's basically all of the variances that we achieved on that lot, and that's about a 6,000 square-foot building also. So with that said, this is the building that, conceptually, this is all conceptual now, because nothing's approved, and we haven't, you know, got our setbacks from ZBA approved. We, and Scott will, you know, show you that we need a setback to wetlands, obviously. We need the residential to commercial setback, which is the crazy 200 feet, which, again, I, I say that most other budding towns, Atkinson, Kingston, you know, 50 feet, 30 feet, you know, I think Manchester has a zero-foot setback. We have a 200-foot setback, and that's to a structure, and we consider everything a structure, a pond, a manhole, a corner of paving. We have a 200-foot setback and that's to a structure and we consider everything a structure, a pond, a manhole, a corner of paving, whatever. So, with that, the only budding piece, and Scott, again, will point this all out to you. I think this is a pump house in Sergeant Woods. So, it's not near any housing. So, even if you go up to the lot line. Interested in butter.
Yes, very interested about it. No, that's a house.
Okay, this is a house, but the building's gonna be way over where the lettering is. So, this is, I believe, a pump house. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a dwelling.
No, that's not, that's not really a house. No house is more of that.
I think it's some kind of outhouse or some.
Actually, I don't think that, I think that was supposed to be the parking lot, which is actually.
Is that the system? Might be the system.
If you go up to the lot line, as far as you can see, and I'm gonna guess, throw a dot at it and say 200 or 300 feet, you can't see any housing. But, that's to be determined.
Mr. McDonough, I have a question for you. You said something about that you subdivided, but you didn't come back to the board to get any subdivision. Are you just talking about phase lines?
Exactly, Barbara. From my understanding, through my attorney, who has written some of the laws and he's a judge and an attorney and he's quite knowledgeable. And he has expressed that we need, you know, ZBA approval. So, again, I'm gonna say that I'm a true believer. I don't, I don't like wasting anybody's time, I don't like people wasting my time. And if we go into ZBA and we get denied, there's no sense of coming here. There's really, I mean, so, we can, we, I, I put a lot of money and there's a lot of disappointed people in, in, in four baseball fields. And I spent 75,000 and a lot of time and a lot of your people's time and effort. And it went for three years and it went nowhere. So, we're spending money and wasting people's time. It's, you know, I just, we did, we did get a denial in ZBA. It's a moot point, if ZBA doesn't grant the variances, you know, there's, there's no sense of even drawing a plan and going further.
I understand.
So, you have a question, Jen?
A piece of, to consider with your approach is that if the ZBA does give you variances.
Yes.
That whatever plan that you design will have to specifically meet those variances. The planning board will have no wiggle room to be able to change that.
They've expressed that to us and they've given us, you know, and they've, and they've pointed this out in specific. Lee said that dimensional, you know, the corner of a parking lot, the corner of a building, and it can't move. So, we know that, you know, if it's 23 and 3/8 of an inch, it's 23 and 3/8 of an inch. So, we won't deviate from that. And they've asked us to, you know, specify and give them a 20-scale dimensional plan. And they know that that's, you know, that's etched in stone, we can't, we can't move it. So, Scott knows that on all his plans, anything that requires a variance needs, needs that dimension, dimensional plan, yeah.
I just have, I have a question because I'm looking at your number four, the one that shows everything.
Okay.
One of the things that you indicated when you gave us the information before was the fact that this little triangular piece is where you want to build the building and that's what, one of the things that you're gonna go to the ZBA for a variance because it's, right now, it's residential and they need to give you an okay for a commercial use on that property, even though they can't change it to commercial. They can give you a variance for a commercial use on that piece, correct? But it's looking like from this plan that you showed that you're taking this road through the commercial and coming right back over here into your, into your housing development. Is that, is that the?
I haven't got to that plan yet, Barbara. I, I'm, this, it will come up, that's my next plan. Can, can we address that?
Sure.
Yeah, when we get to that?
Sure. Sorry, I went ahead of you.
But can I just, um, what, what he said about the baseball fields, those variances were granted, correct? So, like, does that whole order, that all those are?
Correct, they expired, they expired.
They expired, yeah.
So, they expired, so now we're starting completely over.
Yes.
Right, right, okay.
And this is also one of different pieces of the property?
Sandra, I guess what I was trying to address on that, that, that went for three years and I spent probably $75,000 on it. And we had to, at that point in time, this board made me come in front of the planning board and have a full-blown plan with drainage, calculations, ponds, topography, everything. And even the ZBA, one of your members, I clearly remember that Rick Milner attended that meeting and he stood up and he said, "Listen, this guy's got 280 acres, he can move this, all these baseball fields, he can move them." And the reply from the ZBA is, "This guy, CVS wouldn't have even spent that money. This guy's not gonna go through another $75,000, move the whole baseball complex in another area in the park, different topography, different runoff drainage, blah, blah, blah." So, that's what I'm trying to express, Sandra, is.
But you were granted those for that the last time, so.
But I guess what I'm saying is it was, it was, it was three years and a lot of money and, yeah. And, and, and we went through a lot of people's time and it should have been, you know, yeah. And that's something we don't want to do, we don't want to waste time, we don't want to, you know, spend a lot of money if this, you know, isn't, you know, accepted by the town.
So, that's my other question, like Barbara asked, there's no lot line adjustment. Because when you speak of phases, right, you're not moving any lines, this is gonna be within some area that's already defined.
So, the application, at least the materials that were submitted to here, the application did say lot line adjustment. I think, I think we're hearing better clarity as to what you're trying to do.
Good point. I, I missed going back and I missed a point, a very big point, in that going back to this plan, again, I'm not the engineer. The Quintana lot, which houses about a 26,000 to 30,000 with office space, a 30,000 square foot building. We were approached for, for a purchase on that building and basically, we have to define an area, condo land, associated common land that went with that building or a lot. And obviously, we can't get a lot because it doesn't have frontage. And all of this will be spelled out with ZBA. But this lot line, which starts here, goes out here and down here, that lot line does not exist. Back 10 years ago, 12 years ago, when Dennis Quintel did that site plan, I questioned that. And I said, "Dennis, how come we don't have this back lot line in?" He said, "'Cause you will make the balance of the 170 acres non-conforming because it doesn't have road frontage." So, we didn't take that last step to put this lot line in because we would have been making Phase 2, basically Phase 2 and Phase 3, non-conforming because it doesn't have road frontage. But as you'll see on the final plan, which again is conceptual, that we are going to put in, it's about a mile and a half of roadway. So, I think the ZBA will foresee the development of Phase 2 and Phase 3. But to answer your question, that's why we didn't put that lot line in because we just didn't take the extra step in going to the ZBA and making the balance of the land non-conforming. So, that's one of the big variances that we're going, going to go to in front of the ZBA. So, that lot will stand by itself.
So, you know that to do the condominiumization, even if it, you would have to come to the planning board for a subdivision. It's a unique kind of subdivision, but that is.
Most definitely.
So, that would include the lot line that he's talking about?
It'll, it'll include.
We have to approve lot lines, right, or lot line adjustments.
The planning board approves lot lines. You can't approve a non-conforming lot, so a lot with no frontage, you can't approve that type of subdivision. The ZBA would have to grant a variance and there's a whole lot of other regulations that go with that. But condominiumization, you would have to approve, it's a type of subdivision.
Again, it's the chicken and the egg. We gotta go in front of the ZBA and if we get denied, we won't be here. So, but we're hoping that ZBA, on this plan, will see that we are going to develop Phase 2 and Phase 3 and we're gonna put in future road and that they'll give us the lot line adjustment, even though we're making Phase 2 and Phase 3 non-conforming. And that we have an owner in the park that is expanding and wants to stay in the park and he wants another 6,000 square feet and the plan itself as far as a condo subdivision. So, after ZBA grants us all of the above, and there's also dimensional setbacks on the, the, the building that will go on there. So, after, after they grant the lot line adjustment, all the setbacks for the buildings, the condo land subdivision will be back in.
I just need to correct you because they're not gonna give you a lot line adjustment, they can't do that. We do that.
They can grant the subdividing of a lot that has no frontage, that would be the variance that would be required. A lot line adjustment or a subdivision, the planning board would have to approve. So, you would actually need two approvals, but you would need to have a variance to create a lot with no frontage.
Right, they, right, they, they will give him the variance, but he'd need to come to us for.
Correct.
Right. And, okay, I'm not really sure I understand that lot line adjustment since they're not separate lots, they're all one lots, it's just a phase. But I know that this one little piece is right now zoned, zoned residential and you want to use it for commercial, correct?
No, this subdivision is all commercial. I think you might be referring to the next plan, Barbara.
Well, I was, I was looking at some of the information that you had given us in, in the beginning and that little triangular piece is zone, is part of the commercial zone, I mean, part of the residential zone. It's not zone commercial, so what you need from them is a use, a change of use to use that for a commercial.
Correct, correct. And on Plan 4, excuse me, on Plan 4, yeah, I was gonna address that.
Okay.
Not that I'm an engineer, but any further questions?
Well, I guess I need to know, what is it that you need from us tonight? Is what are you asking for, for us to do tonight?
I just thought, you know, that I would show you conceptually. We've, we've had this discussion in the past. Again, we go back to, you know, working time efficiently in that, you know, we wanted to make sure that, you know, you have a copy of the plans simultaneously to go into ZBA, get the approvals out of ZBA, come back to you. But you could be, you know, reviewing the plans and maybe filtering it to the Board of Health, the Fire Department.
Well, until we get an actual plan to us, we can't do anything.
Can I ask or make a few statements, ask a few questions that I think might clarify this? Because what was submitted to the planning board was a planning board application for a lot line with all the information you're showing right now. So, technically, they were given an application. They didn't, they didn't notice it, I think you got the email and you're, so, my point being is that you submitted an application. So, technically, they have to decide on something and they, they could, and this is my suggestion, that they deny it not out of merit, not saying there's anything wrong with the plan, but just because what you supplied for the application is just incomplete for doing a lot line or a site plan or a change of, it, it just doesn't meet any of those requirements. There's nothing wrong per se with what you're trying to do, it's just it doesn't have that information for what you applied for. So, I don't think you intended to apply, is kind of what I'm getting.
I didn't, Jen. I, I did not intend to, intend to apply. Back probably 12 years ago when Mike, I forget his last name, DiBallaato, he was the building inspector. And back then, he issued us two or three denials. But I was told that, through a couple of people in town, that you have to come to the planning board and get denied.
I can't speak to who told you that for if you need a variance. In all honesty with the information you submitted, I can't even give you an accurate thorough list of what variances you may or may not need because I'm not, I don't see the full picture. I'd be happy to do that, we can get to that in a second. But you technically do not need a denial from the planning board to seek relief from the zoning board or something.
Yes, they do. The zoning board here requires that.
I'm just saying, they may require, but it is not state.
But I don't know whether they, it needs to be a denial from the planning board or the building department. They just require, they do require a denial.
Under, under, under state law, that is not a requirement. What, what your ZBA may or may not do, that is honestly their rules of procedure. But technically, you do not need a denial and especially if it's a very clear, you know, a 50-foot setback and you only want to go 20 feet.
Right. So.
Our, our ZBA's, their policies of procedures requires a denial from the planning board.
That may be, I don't, I don't work.
That's same, so I guess what I would ask is if the ZBA is gonna require that, what can we do to deny something that you can take to the ZBA?
Well, let me, let me say again, I was told at first that the planning board is the only person that's gonna issue the denial. Then I was told the planning board or the building department could issue the denial. Then I was told by another person that the building inspector is too green, he just came on board and you gotta go in front of the planning board.
Okay.
Okay, and then, lastly, I was told that I could go back like I did 12 years ago and get a denial from the building department. To, to do this, it speeds up the process. If the town is receptive to the development of this project, it'll take years off. Again, going back to the baseball fields, I had to come in here with a full set of plans and get denied. Not, not a partial, a full set of plans and then I was allowed to go to planning.
I'm not seeing that, based on what McDonough, Mr. McDonough would like, I'm not seeing that that's anything that the planning board can give him, that he's going to need to go get these variances from the zoning board. So, I think that because we can't give him the relief that he's asking for, I'm thinking that we need to deny this application right now based on the fact that we can't grant those variances.
Well, Barbara, I, just so it's crystal clear, the building department already gave me a denial and I'm already scheduled for the next ZBA meeting.
Okay, well then.
Which, which, which will speed up the process and, you know, I don't, and again, as Jen said, you know, if that's a rule in regulation and RSA, whatever, I mean, you know, maybe the, maybe the ZBA should be aware of that and, you know, eliminate the denial at a period. Then it could really speed up the process.
That, that would be up to them. We can, we can deny it on the fact that we don't have.
I would deny it simply because it's incomplete for what was actually checked as a lot line adjustments because I realize it's not really a lot line adjustment at this phase. It's incomplete for a lot line adjustment, that's what application. I, I realize it seems a little bit like a silly point, but that is what was applied for.
Right.
My other offer to Mr. McDonough or to your engineer is to, if you. if you have a sketch or, you know, sort of the master plan of what you're trying to do, I can look through that and give you a better sense of what variances you might need, what approvals from the planning boards, what the order you may need to do that in or seek that relief in. So at least you have a better framework to be working through, and that may be able to help you at least know the timeframes a little bit better or have a better sense of what order so that we don't get into this going around and around that we've gotten to in the past. I would, that's, that's what I'm here to do and to help with.
I appreciate that, Jen. And I, I think that Scott and Greg Michael have a handle on all of that. And if you look at it and you put yourself in my position as a developer, even my engineer said this, I mean, to get a denial letter, it's almost like we did. We asked for a building permit and we got denied. So we know that there's several variances, but you ask for a building permit and get denied. So it's kind of, whatever you ask for, it's kind of like ambiguous because you're not seeing the whole picture. And then when you get into the ZBA, then, you know, it'll be all dimensional plans. We need centerline of road. We need setback to the wetland. You know, we need this lot line. Why? Because it's not, it's making lot Phase Two and Phase Three non-conforming. But then they'll see when we get to the next plan that there's a roadway coming through. You know, we'd like to develop this project in that we have a lot of interest with the economy. And, you know, I've talked to several people in the town, and I think it's a great project. And if there's no more questions on this, we'll get to the final... And again, it's just a conceptual, I'm just here in politeness to show the town everything that we're trying to do. We, obviously, you know that we're on Lot Four. We're building Lot Four. After we get done Lot Four, we wanna build a building for interstate rigging. And it's, that's about a 6,000-square-foot building, and then we expect to go to Phase Two and Phase Three. I mean, Ed Wallace from Interstate Rigging came tonight, and if you'd like to meet Ed, I think some of you people know him. If you wanna get up and say a few words.
Hi.
Hello.
Ed Wallace, nice to meet you. I was before you once for my occupancy permit several years ago. But we just have a few trucks. We, we have three trucks total, four trailers, four guys. We receive machines and deliver them to local machine shops. No hazardous waste to speak of. You know, flammable storage cabinet for, you know, small paint cans and things like that. We've had several safety inspections for our insurance audits and passed those in flying colors. And I'm just here to introduce myself and answer any questions you guys may have for me should this plan go forward.
Actually, we can't really ask you any questions right now because you don't have an application in front of us, but thank you for introducing yourself.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I'm Roger Hamel, and I live in Sergeant Woods. First of all, in your packet, you listed, you, you, you listed Sergeant Woods as an abuser, and the mailing for, was gonna go to Evergreen Harvard Group. But I wanna make sure you have the right address. So they have the, the correct address to send the notice for Evergreen Harvard Group. Make sure that we get it.
The mic, it can't be heard.
What?
Roger, Roger, talk into the mic, please.
I believe that, that the assessor's office does have the correct address, but it's not the location address, obviously. It's, it's, it's the address of the offices of Evergreen Harvard. The other question that I have is when you converted Phase One to a condominium, you took, according to the deed, 250,000 square feet, and so you no longer own the land on Phase One, do you?
I think you're referring to Lot Three.
Yeah, I'm talking about, yeah...
You're talking about the phase plan?
Yeah, the, Phase One.
This plan?
So, so that land has been converted to a condominium, so you no longer own that land, correct?
Some of it.
All, all of Phase One?
Some of it.
You own an undivided piece as a condominium owner?
Correct.
But you, but you're not the owner of record. The condominium association is the owner of record of Phase One, of all the land in Phase One.
I, I guess, there's 15 units. So I own two of the units, so I have a share in that land?
Yeah, but, but any action on it would not be you. It would be the condominium association.
Correct.
As the assoc... So when, when you draw, so, so when you draw the lot line for what you own, that isn't included in it?
This, it was because this Phase One and Phase Two lot line adjustment was done...
That wasn't a lot, that was a phase line, not a lot line. You never, you never got, you never got a subdivision.
Excuse me. I rephrase that. It, it was a phasing line done by some accounting agency.
Right, but, but it wasn't a subdivision, even though you sold a portion.
Correct. That's what we're going for.
So you're gonna need to get a subdivision which will subdivide out the condominium land?
Yes. Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Foot, did you want to say something?
So, so tonight, you've just given us the overall picture of what you want to do. Your original application's getting denied tonight because it wasn't complete fully. Once you go to your ZBA meeting and get approval or denial, if you get approval, you're gonna submit another application that's full and all your plans with your engineer, correct?
Correct.
Just to be clear, it would, it would be a couple of applications, a lot line adjustment, a site plan. There may be some other components in here, but it may be multiple applications, just to be clear.
True.
Tonight, we're just denying that present application.
Correct. The application that was presented.
This is just informational session here.
Right.
Let me, let me ask the flavor of the board. You know, and we had this discussion, both me, my engineer, my attorney. And I was gonna ask the ZBA just this, that, you know, there's, there's the lot line adjustment, right, of the Quintana Building, right? There's the subdivision, which has a bunch of variances, and then the, the, the building itself, the 6,000-square-foot building. So with that said, you know, we didn't know whether to bring it all to the ZBA at once.
To be honest, I would need to see this a little bit better sketched out. I think I'm getting a better sense of what you're trying to do this evening. I can't give you a full list of what variances you may or may not need and what additional approvals.
That's great. Thank you very much.
But I would, I'd be willing to try and do that if I had a better sketch. I'm getting a much better sense than with the application that was submitted, but...
So again, it's the lot line adjustment because we're making the balance, Phase Two and Phase Three, non-conforming because it, it won't have road frontage yet. Then it's the subdivision itself, and then it's the setback for the 6,000. All of the setbacks, whether it's wetlands, you know, residential to commercial, there's, you know, there's several on that also. You know? So if you do that, Jen, that'd be very helpful. And I'll let Greg and Scott make that decision, whether it's gonna be too confusing for ZBA.
That, that's your choice as a developer.
To me, it's like, put it all on the table. I just, you know... But that'd be great if you make that list, and I'll forward it to Scott and Greg.
I can do the best I can, given what information has been presented.
Yeah, you, you have Scott's email.
I do.
Yeah, yeah. So that'd be very helpful. I guess, so that's, that's what we're going for with, with the ZBA. And again, that singles out the 6,000-square-foot building which needs setbacks. And that's, Scott kinda answered that for me, too. We, you know, we still have drainage ponds and, you know, final topography and, you know, there's, there's other incompleteness of the six...
Just to let you know, and I can let Scott know the planning board recently updated its site plan requirements for stormwater that may change what Scott may have been working on the old stormwater regulations.
The state or...
No, for the, the town's stormwater regulations for how you deal with drainage and erosion control.
Okay. So that's...
So that is something Scott should be able to look at with the new site plan requirements, and I can make him aware of that as well.
That'd be great.
He's aware of it.
Is he? Okay. Great.
So the final, the final plan, just so, just so it all fits together, and I, and I think Barbara already had some questions.
I was just looking at it. That's all right. I'm okay.
This is, this is a master plan that we've pretty much followed, back going back 12 years ago when Peachy was the chairman of the planning board, and I don't think anybody was on the board. It's just me standing here myself. So it's taken a long time. But this is the master plan that we've come up with in that if you look at it, again, I think we roughly have 100 and, 280 acres in that this is Route 108 down here in that, obviously, puzzling was a driveway, and it came up to the puzzle building in that we had to, it took us a year and a half to get accepted as a roadway in that we also bonded it to have it all reconstructed. And we reconstructed it, and it, it's accepted by the town, and it has five lots. Scott skipped number three, so it might get a little confusing. You got the first building, which I referred to previously, that we got pretty much all similar setbacks that we were requesting from ZBA on 12, number 12, which is the proposed building that I showed you previously. But Building One, Building Two, and they're gonna put a list together of all of the tenants, the current tenants that are in these buildings. So the town will know everybody that's in the commercial and industrial park. Counting them today, I think that we have like 33 businesses in Phase One in the town in that I think Phase One came out pretty nice. I think it's well landscaped, well maintained. But we've got roughly, I think it's somewhere, including the puzzle company, about 400,000 square feet. We're currently working on building number 10. So after we get done with 10, we wanna finish, we'd like to construct 12 for interstate rigging, and that'll complete Phase One. And there'll be 12 buildings in Phase One, 33 businesses. I think everybody's pretty satisfied with Phase One. By the way, we're having a cookout in August. Not sure of the date, but I'll send the invitation to the planning board. You're welcome to come down and have some food, and we're gonna have cornhole and all the tenants in the park. We're gonna have a afternoon together, so we'd like you to come down. What we're, what we're proposing to the town is Phase, Phase Two will come in right next to the old S and R building, which is this building down here. I think it has around 14 lots. My plan is highlighted in, I'm gonna call it green, in that there's about 14 lots, and then the balance, I think there's 30 lots. They're all about two and a half to five acres-ish in that if somebody big wanted to come in, you know, our theory is, is that maybe we could take out lot lines, and if somebody, you know, larger with a, you know, 30,000 or 100,000 to 200,000, we could fit them into Phase One or Phase Three. We were on the shortlist for Amazon, but they elected to go down to North Andover. And ironically, a lot of people in North Andover are looking at coming into the park. So we've got a lot of interest, and the roads Scott has coming through here, and again, this is all conceptual. And back when, there was a discussion as to joining the roads. We, we do have interest in the two blue lots, and I think that this is what you were referring to, Barbara. That's residential. And we were looking at the town accepting a workforce housing type of one-bedroom, low impact on the town, college-type of atmosphere, you know, campus, college campus type of atmosphere, walk to, walk to work, bike to work, minimize traffic, workforce housing. And we were, we were hoping that the town would buy into that. I think, I think it's a great idea. We have a lot of people from Germany that are in the puzzle company. There's six interns, usually at all times, and they stay at hotels. And there's a lot of people that coming into, from Israel, Dubai, that, you know, with Halo, other companies, you know, there's, there's a lot of interest in housing. So there was a big discussion as to the connection of the roadways, breakaway gates, stop the roadways, blah, blah, blah. But I think that the 30 lots, if you look at it, everybody would come in Route 108. 99% of the people are coming up from Massachusetts, although we've gotten an influx of, we've just had a couple of people from Newton move in, Kingston, East Kingston. But I think 90% of your traffic would come up 108, which is a state highway. We wouldn't reuse any of your roadways, basically. I think it's concealed. Other than the stone wall entrance, you know, it's kind of set back and condensed in an area where it's out of sight, out of mind. I don't think you even know we're there when you go up 108 in that as far as your dump, we don't use your dump. We, we have casella and waste management, so we don't use any of your dumps, your dumping services. As far as the Fire Department, I think that we've got a pond here in Phase One. Ravensburg's got a pond. We're proposing to the Fire Department another 66,000 gallons cistern, five of the last tanks for unit 10, they're gonna call it Nine Puzzle, which if there was an emergency, you could, you know, use it for Sergeant Woods or Walnut Farms. We also got a pond down here. There's another pond down to 4B Puzzle, and there's another 60,000-gallon cistern next to Ravensburg. The Fire Department's come in and tested and, you know, they've used the ponds. So I think we've contributed to the Fire Department. There's two or three dry hydrants. I think the, the two cisterns will have, you know, dry, dry hydrants so they can tap into them with their fire trucks. And we don't put one kid in school. And doing a rough, quick calculation, I think that at the end of the day, with Phase One, Two, and Three, there'll be about 150 businesses. And if you take Lot Four, that was around two and a half acres. As I said, you know, we got two and a half to five acres. That's the sizing of a lot. the lots out in Phase 2 and Phase 3. I think we're paying close to 40,000 in taxes for Phase, for 4A and B, between, if you use that, there's kind of a guideline, I think will be in and around $2 million in taxes without using one service of the town. Along with, you know, we'll have current use taxes, registrations, building department, I think we just gave them 5,000, at the end of the day, we'll probably be upwards of $10,000 in permits and fees with the building department, plumbing, engineering, all of that, opportunity for jobs, plumbers, electricians, carpenters, you know, we're looking for help as we speak right now, so if there's anybody, you know, my feeling is, is use town people first. I just gave McKenzie my card, we're using him for, you know, all of our propane. I think it's well maintained, I cut all the grass, I think, you know, landscape-wise, it's presentable, we haven't had any complaints as far as snow plowing, we talked about, you know, local companies employing them, and I think that's about it. I think it's a great project. Any questions?
Not really. Thank you for your overview, I appreciate it.
Two, two comments. One is this...
Roger, you need to talk into the microphone, sorry.
You stand on that side.
Okay. So I'm getting a better perspective, because actually, this plan, what show of the Sargent Woods is the old Nichols Drury, and not what's actually there.
Okay. But quite similar, right?
Yeah, but actually, if you, this one is what Sargent Woods actually looks like. So the building you were proposing earlier is gonna go here?
That's number 12, right.
That's the one that you were talking about at the beginning of the meeting.
Right, and I think these are your two closest, still your two closest houses.
So on this plan you're talking about will be right about here?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. My next question is, do you have another copy of this?
You're welcome, if you move to my office, I can give you a copy, Roger.
Well, thank you very much for the overview, I appreciate that. It's nice to know what your plans are going forward. Now the board has to decide whether we're going to deny Mr. McDonough's application.
Well, it's not complete, right?
Right.
Yeah, so my recommendation in any motion is that you state that it is incomplete, in that it is not on the merit of the application, but it is just due to its lack of completeness with your subdivision and site plan regulations, and because it's effectively missing almost all of the components of that, it's hard to provide a list, so I would just state it as a blanket statement, as it's not compliant with your site plan or your subdivision regulations.
Right.
Yeah, it's an incomplete application.
So you understand that's not on the merits, it's just a paperwork thing to, actually to help us move forward.
Exactly. I just wanted you to know as the planning board that, you know, we've had this discussion in the past that, you know, have kind of a non-public, you know, conceptual plan type of meeting that, you know, if you have any input, you know...
I think right there is your best input.
One other, if you do want to come back for a more informed discussion that you can have with the planning board, you can come with a design review application, a butters would be notified, it's again a non-binding discussion, but you can get a little bit more in the sense of feedback from the board without necessarily going through for, say, like the drainage calculations and doing all of that engineering, it would be more of a conceptual thing, much like you presented this evening, maybe they, and they can provide a little bit more feedback, they'd have a chance to look at ahead of time. So that is your, completely your option to take or not.
Just so it's clear with the planning board and the public that we're gonna come in for just the subdivision, mainly for the roadways, in that all the, all of these 30 lots will come back in before you for site plan review for each individual lot. So, you know, you'll have 30 times to kick the can down the road.
Just one thing for the board and for you to be aware of, that it might come in to do a subdivision in an industrial sense of this magnitude, might come to regional impact, and that's for the planning board to declare.
Regional what?
It's called a regional, a development of regional impact. What it means is that it gives the planning commission, which I actually work for, the ability to provide comments, and it would be in part to help any neighboring communities that may be impacted, in this case it's primarily Plastow, with concerns about water resources, traffic, that might be the biggest with something like this, air pollution. It may not come to that, it's really the planning board that declares it regional impact.
Right.
Simply because of the number of lots that are of an industrial use abutting in another town, it may be something that may be part of that discussion when you get to it. It doesn't mean you can't do it, the planning board or the planning commission has no authority to stop anything, we just provide comments to the actual planning board from a regional perspective.
We, then one point that I didn't make clear that, which I will, was Scott, that the yellow being Phase 2, we're gonna probably stop the roadway and put a temporary cul-de-sac in and around here, so it won't be such an impact with, you know, there'll be Phase 2, and then there'll be Phase 3, in that I...
That's all residential, correct?
No, none of that's residential.
Oh, that's gonna be...
That's all, that's all commercial and industrial, yeah.
That's the only reason I mentioned the regional impact. In all honesty, if that was residential, I don't think it would come into play.
I thought it was zoned residential, that portion.
The other thing is, is this line right here is the divisional line between Newton and Plastow, and I know the building inspector, Mike Dorman, and I believe Leah's left, but I was gonna address with the Plastows' planning and building as to how they want to handle, and maybe you can start your thinking about how you want to handle this lot right here, lot, I think it's 4, that's almost, the whole lot's almost in Plastow.
So you would, with any lot that crosses into the adjacent town, you would need their approval in addition to Newton's approval for any site plan or subdivision?
Somebody had mentioned that with the concession, because, you know, it's basically gonna be accessed by Newton roadways, that they might do a concession and just say, "Newton, you handle it."
And occasionally, when it, if most of the activity or the access is really gonna be in Newton, then Plastow's planning board could make a determination that this has no impact in the town of Plastow, so we approve of this proposal. It can be something that simple, it kind of depends on what's being proposed.
Right.
Okay, hold on a minute, 'cause I want to hold a recess here for a minute so that we can get another piece of information.
So you want the zoning map?
Yeah, just a minute.
Would you like, I have a copy of the zoning map, right here, if you'd like it.
Jim?
That's all right.
You come prepared.
I try.
Oh, that's not gonna help me.
Your zoning is by a lot that is an interpretation of the lots, the way they are zoned in your But things like zoning district would be one of the very first items that would be checked by me with any application. I'd have to go through and honestly re-review your application and look closely, but...
As far as, as far as that goes, I think Scott and me, well, on most of the plans, he does, yeah, he depicts residential zone and commercial zone.
That is commercial.
Yeah, okay. This is residential.
Residential.
Okay, just this little piece. Okay, my misunderstanding, I don't know why I, when I looked at this first, I thought that they were house lots, that's why I thought that was zoned residential.
That was the...
Okay, there's just this one little piece that's zoned residential.
So if you look at this plan, Barbara, the, I'm gonna call it green or yellow.
Thank you, Jim.
That's Phase 1, that's completely commercial and industrial, the orange is completely commercial and industrial.
Okay.
And these two blue, this parcel and this smaller parcel, they're the ones that I had talked about as far as they're, they're kind of landlocked, you'd say, landlocked if we don't develop them with the commercial and industrial. And, I mean, I think it's a great idea to minimize traffic and, you know, being able to bike and walk to work.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry for my misunderstanding there.
I think my foreman wanted to make a couple of notations also.
Yeah, taxpaying resident too, right?
Okay, will you identify yourself, please, for the record?
Thomas Lackborg.
Thank you.
Resident of Newton.
Okay.
And I also build all this stuff with Coleman, as you know. I'm pretty excited about the new plan we have for the 33 lots. I think it's, we have a lot of interest, and I'm kind of happy that we're at this stage, and that we're showing it to you, and I wish that we could get this thing going and down the road and create a lot of activity, a lot of tax money, dollars rolling, and a lot of work, a lot of employment. And the economy's good, and as you know, we have to go and sell all these lots, and that takes a lot of work, and we just like to keep a happy face on that whole thing. And appreciate, I would appreciate all the help that you guys can give us, work with us, whatever, whatever we need to do to move forward, and...
All right, thank you.
All right.
Okay. Okay. So do we have a motion on this application?
So the motion would be to deny the application as incomplete?
Correct. Deny the application as incomplete on the basis that information required under your subdivision and site plan requirements were not fully supplied.
Some of.
Get all that? Second?
Who seconded that?
Jim.
Jim? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
Do you have a call to vote?
Yes, it's unanimous, I'm sorry. Yes, okay, so we will, we will give you a letter too, all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your overview of what your plans are, appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing you in the future.
Awesome. I the same.
When is your ZBA? Oh, it's that zone, okay.
It was last night.
Just keep in mind the application deadlines and schedules. Well, he's in a butter, he can't, he can't vote. That's why he was sitting in the audience, he recused himself.
Okay. Okay. All right, gentlemen, hang on, 'cause we're not finished with our meeting yet, but thank you. Okay, and Mr. Hamel is returning to the board.
Extra information like this?
It's a little unusual.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes of 7:23.
Move to accept the minutes.
Roger Hamel, Jim White, Dane White, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are you abstaining?
I wasn't here yet, so...
Okay, Mr. Foot is abstaining?
Long as Roger...
Thank you.
Okay.
Manifest? Operating budget manifest, okay, $6,499.95 circuit rider contract and legal notices and postage.
Move to page.
Mr. Hamel? Mike? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, I'll sign that in a minute. Nipper expense, let's see, $291.77 for legal notices, a butter notices, and mileage.
Move to page.
Second.
You got that, Roger and Jim? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Anything? Correspondents? Law lectures?
There's...
Law lectures?
I just want to remind people that I sent out an email regarding the NH, New Hampshire Municipal Association now has condensed their law lectures into a one-day marathon.
Marathon.
Yeah, a lot of caffeine will be necessary. If you wish to attend, you need to let the office know so that I can schedule it and...
And pay for it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to pay for it?
I know, you sent me the note, do you have the date offhand?
Not off the top of my head, I...
It's in October, isn't it?
Yes, that's why...
It's in October.
During the weekend, weekend.
I believe it's an all-day Saturday.
Highly recommended, they do a good job.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's gonna be a long day.
It is going to be a very long day.
Okay, all right, anybody else have anything?
Just briefly, this is the time of year, if you were contemplating of small zoning changes, possibly big zoning changes, but if there are things in the zoning that you think need clarification, changing, this is the time to be working on those, even if they're smaller, so that they are ready to have a discussion with the planning board over a course of a few meetings, so then if there's the need to then have public hearings to then be able to put it on the warrant article, this is the time of year to begin gearing up for any of those changes, so...
Right, 'cause there's only a certain timeframe after we get our stuff done to be able to move that forward.
Correct, but you want enough lead time to start drafting the changes, discuss them amongst the board before you would even get to the point of moving it to a public hearing, so you'd have all those discussions at meetings, but that can sometimes take, depending on how big the changes, several meetings. I don't have anything specific that we've discussed in the past for zoning, but there are certainly small things that always can be tweaked every year. The one that you may want to contemplate, and I apologize for not bringing sort of draft language, but the state law passed last year allowing planning boards through warrant article and through voter adoption to basically allow variances that may have been granted prior to 2013, which basically are allowed to go on indefinitely, to actually have an expiration date. So what that would mean is that you could move, and you would adopt it as a zoning ordinance, but it would have dates in it, that you would, in March of 2020, you would post a public notice, that notice would be up for... That notice would be up for a year. Anybody that has a special exception or a variance from back before 2013, because that's when some state laws changed, that variances can only be utilized for two years. So you have two years currently, with a current variance, to utilize it. Anybody that got something approved as a variance prior to 2013 would then, from 2020, have two years to actually utilize that variance or that special exception. It means that a variance that was granted in 1972 would then cease to be an acceptable variance come 2023 if it hadn't been utilized.
And if they wanted the same thing, they would have to come back to, to the zoning board for that variance?
Correct. The only thing that catches in that loophole is if a lot was created with a variance, that legal lot is allowed to remain. But it would be things like you wanted to build a building in a setback, you wanted to have a use that was no longer allowed, and you had not started using that variance.
Is that anything that we need to research to find out if we have this, or is it their responsibility?
No, so that, it's their responsibility. The reason is that you basically will end up putting a public notice up, so the day after the, if that zoning ordinance were to get approved, the day after that, you would do a general public notice in two places. You would notice it in the paper as well, that you have between any variances granted before 2013, and there's a March date in there, you have until this date in 2023 to be able to utilize that variance, whether it need, you need to pull the building permit or you need to begin that activity if it was a use variance. You would have that notice, and it would be a public notice that you'd put at the town hall and at the post office. So it would be a blanket public notice. You do not have to do research.
That, that sounds like a very good thing to do, just to, just to clean up any of the old stuff.
It covers old things, and they pop up every once in a while. Not necessarily have I seen them in Newton, I've seen them in a few other towns.
But it would, it would be good to, to just, to clean up any old variances that have been hanging around forever.
That's effectively what it does, but it does give people a window of opportunity, so to speak, to still use something that they were granted legally.
If you could, you know, bring the draft language.
It's a pretty simple zoning ordinance, but I can bring that for the next meeting.
I think that would be very good. Sounds like a good thing to have.
Just a question, because it has come up here. Would that possibly release any senior housing units that were, you know, how we have an allotment of senior housing units based on? We presently have, I believe it's 16 out there that have never been built.
Were, they were given a-
They were given a variance allowing them to-
If it was before 2013 and they didn't utilize it in the timeframe, then yes, that would go away.
That's a good reason to, to clean it up.
It's something as a selectman, it's actually come to my notice, but I actually had somebody that called last week that wanted to know how many elderly housing unit allocations were available in Newton.
But so effectively, yes. It would make it so that you would, that, that would expire if it wasn't used. If they wanted to seek another variance, they could certainly apply, but any variance is granted today or since 2013, you have to use in two years. If you don't use it, you lose it.
Right.
Okay. All right, that sounds good.
Oh, and I put at everybody's place, Barbara, had found-
Yeah, I found that information.
Reading material.
Okay, I was, that's why I was going to ask where this came from and why we have it.
Just for your information, in case you're interested, if you're not, you know, it could start your fire this winter or something.
It's a good resource.
Well, the one thing I noticed just looking on the front, that I believe we don't allow right now, is the detached.
Correct.
You do not, which is not allowing detached is fairly common around here. Some towns will allow it for existing structures if the structure existed prior to whatever date.
We just remoted it from last year.
You did, because the state law changed, so that anything that's zoned, single family in New Hampshire has to allow accessory dwellings, but you, you can have restrictions on that.
Yeah, because we, when we did that, we discussed at some length the idea of whether or not they're allowed detached.
And I think, I think our, at that time, I think our discussion was, let's wait and see how many people are actually asking for detached before we decide whether we want to change that or not.
My, my own experience with that is that people will look at the regulations and then they, they know very quickly that detached is not allowed, so that they're not going to ask for it.
Right.
Or at least they're not going to get to the stage of applying before the planning board and asking for it. Every once in a while, an inquiry, and I can't remember if they were specifically Newton or not, because none of my towns allow detached, someone will ask, can I put it in my existing garage? Can I put it in my barn?
Is it something that we may want to revisit on the sooner side, or?
Well, we haven't had very many requests, and it's been my, my experience to find that most towns around, the budding town over here where I worked at, they don't like to approve the detached because no place allows two residences on one piece of property. And, you know, it's, it's not accessory to your house if it's detached over here, but if it is attached.
But we, didn't we have one application where they basically sort of attached it?
It is not uncommon if you have two structures for then someone to try to comply by putting in a breezeway. Yes, you did have one application.
And I think we had on, an application, that, that's what they did.
We did.
They, they put a structure in between, so it became all one.
And sometimes that looks natural, and sometimes it does not.
That's what I'm trying to keep away from, actually. What's that?
Oh, so we could make it one.
There is the ability to write, or in this case, amend a zoning ordinance so that you don't get the, the what is that sort of reaction, so that you're, the planning board is allowed a little bit of wiggle room to allow detached. You have to word it very carefully. You have to word it in a way that still meets the general intent, which I think the planning board is generally trying to keep them attached, but situations where you may want to allow detached and not have someone try to get around that by having the funny breezeway. So if that's, that's something we can certainly explore. That wouldn't be a huge zoning ordinance. It would foster a lot of discussion, I think, though, but now's the time to think about it.
Are we talking at Wallace and want to wait?
We're not talking anything specific. No, we're not talking anything specific. No.
I mean, because it's been done in town, you know?
You have had accessory dwellings where they built more or less a breezeway or a hallway to attach a structure.
Oh, yeah.
I think at least two applications, and you've had several more accessory apartments.
I believe that that doesn't even come, didn't even send, come in for a permit.
I can't speak to that name or that lot one way or the other.
Okay. Good. All right. If we are, have no more discussion, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:58.